States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Bobby, would you take the roll call, please?
Tim Fuller?
Here.
Terrick Gilzough. Yes. Andy Mary?
Present.
Scott Janssman?
I'm here.
Jeanie Long? Patrick McKenna?
Present.
Jessica Mead? Here. Danielle Yushka? Mike Golding?
Here. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll go on to item four, the consent agenda, and we'll be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the minutes of the April 25th and 26th meetings as the financial report from March 2016 and payment of bills and transfers through checks 5958 through 6091 and checks 151601363 through 151601509 and wire transfer of $13,075.27,
Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none. Bobby, roll call, please.
Terrick Gilzough? Yes. Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Janssman?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes. Very good. We will go on to item five, citizens' delegations. Tim, would you do some time? We have three individuals who have signed up to speak tonight. We would ask that you do keep your comments to within a five-minute time frame, please. And first up, Tom Zanico.
After the failed mega school referendum, the board elected three new board members, all who I campaigned for. A year later, four new board members were elected on the promise that we would all work together. Soon afterward, the consolidation's discussion started. I sincerely believe that this board would take all of the district's wants and needs into the discussion. As I had campaigned on a consolidation plan that spread the burden equally over between in-town and rural, receiving one-third of the votes, and I was respected among the more conservative members of the community, I took it upon myself to be involved in the process to determine the direction of the district's future. As you, the board members, well know, altered my insights and inputs throughout the process. The decision of where the grade breaks eliminated most of the options. But the concept of north and south rural schools, along with refitting an in-town school, is still alive. In public forums, it was obviously a favor. By the time we started talking about three option surveys, the price for all options had exploded. We had long discussions about the price the public would support. Before you ever had a choice on what the referendum would be, you knew the chance of passing anything above $20 million was iffy at best. The cost continued to inflate until it was only $3 million difference to build a new school. I, along with many others, was opposed to new construction at a time of decreasing enrollment. I continued to support the process with the hope for the district-wide solution to the necessary $1 million operational savings. The board then slashed improvements on the two chosen rural schools to cut the total and keep the new school in town. I was not happy, but I continued to support since the closing of four schools to a rural two-city was equal and saved the $1 million. Then, when we were told the referendum only saved half a million dollars because the rest of the savings would be redistributed, you lost my support. The reason for rural schools is because the district is so large geographically. To keep two schools next to each other defeats the purpose. To put a mere 10% of the referendum into those schools is an insult to the rural community. When the board member tells me directly that I must get the rural support for a referendum or he will close Mattoon, it's unethical and an insult to me. Going out to service groups telling the referendum is not the same as addressing the entire district's wants. Promoting a referendum on survey were half the responses from school district employees and families, if not the entire district's wants. This referendum was doomed before it made it to the polls. The board was just too blind to see it. Our business director said while the after referendum failed, that this community does not support education. I beg to differ. They do not, they support education, but they do not support your vision of facility makeup for this district. This board, like the old Board of Protestants, the low mega school referendum, obviously believes that the wants of half of the little-town variable are more important than the other two-thirds of the district. The unethical and illegal vote to close Mattoon School immediately after the failed vote shows the two true colors of this board. If everyone in Mattoon had voted yes, they still would have failed by over 2,000 votes. There never was a compromise only placating to get the new school. It is painfully obvious that members of this board are only interested in the rural communities for the money they put into the district. A board member told me, "You're not even in this county." Fine, you don't want to include us, we can leave. It's an absolute shame that the duly-elected school board squandered the best chance of addressing this district's financial deficit that we've had in years. Once again, we have a few imposing a will on the many. I am thoroughly disgusted with the majority of this board. At this point, my allegiance is with the rural community in general and Mattoon community especially. I see no reason for me to speak to this board, as you obviously did not listen. Instead of wasting my time here, I'd rather go home and see who wins the voice. I know I'm burning a bridge here, but it's been a one-way bridge. So do whatever you want, and we'll see who's on this board next day.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Next up will be Glenn Novick.
I came to talk about the funding. The reason that a lot of the board members supported the closure of Mattoon was to be physically responsible. I guess there's argument against that, because closing any school, you could argue that it's physically responsible. I researched, let's see, the referendum since 1966, and I know several of the people in here were on the task force, so a lot of people in this room actually have the same information that I have, all of the referendums from 1966 through 2012. In these referendums, the main question is new buildings. So there was a new building for high school, new building for elementary school. All of those referendums are voted no, which we all know the history of that. There was two referendums asked of our community to support elementary education in the communities. So in 1978, a referendum was asked to support rural education, specifically Mattoon. Shall issue its negotiable general obligations, coupon bonds, and some not to exceed the amount $200,000 for the purpose of improving school buildings in addition to Mattoon Elementary School. It passed, 60% to 40%, okay? So then we waited a bunch of years in between that, and then we asked our community again in 1997 if it would support a referendum for grades K through 12 to support our community schools. It passed overwhelmingly, again, a yes. Those were the only two times the referendum ever went into helping support our community schools. All the other referendums were to build new buildings. All of the referendums that were for building new buildings failed. They were all no's. The two referendums that went to the taxpayers supporting our community schools passed. Those are two options, or two opportunities we had to support our community education, and the two opportunities we stepped up and we said, "Yes, we want to support our community schools. Please let us help." Since 1997, we have not been proposed that question again. I'm asking the school board to maybe propose a question to our district and ask us if we will step up and help. I'm asking the district, or the school board, to rescind their closure of Mattoon Elementary and propose to our community if they would step up and help support our community schools. We've not been asked since 1997, we're going on a decade almost here. Give us a chance to support what we value. We've not had the opportunity since 1997. Please.
Quinn, are you saying there has been no operational referendum since 1997?
For elementary schools. Middle school, yes.
Well, I don't think operational referendum, sorry, is broken down specifically for what they're going for.
Would you like to read this?
Sure.
I would get bored, I'm sure. Well, Patrick McKenna has this, and his wife was on the task force. Scott Janssman has this, his wife was on the task force. Mike Golding has this, Danielle has this. I know several people in here have that form. You were on the task force, you were on the task force, you were on the task force. There's several members in here on the task force. We all have that information. I broke it down for you. Would you like to break them? New building, new building, new building, new building, new building. It's all broke down here.
So, in 2007, there's an operational referendum, in 2006, there's a...
It does not say for elementary education. Does not say for elementary school.
So you're saying community schools? When you say community schools, you say elementary school?
Look at the two referendums that were voted yes.
Okay.
Okay. Read them. It supports K through 12, K through 12 education. The other one supports elementary education. The other referendums down there were for new stuff at the middle school level and at the high school level. If you word a referendum to support community schools, so we know that the money's going to community schools, I would venture to, yes, it's going to pass.
When we...
Give us the opportunity.
When we word an operational referendum, it's supporting community schools.
With the history...
All, all the schools in our district are part of the community.
Okay. With the history of what the board has done in the administration, taxpayers are going to need more specific stuff. Like, it is worded in the one that was voted yes, K through 12 education. Like, the one that is worded with elementary education. We need to know that it's going to elementary education. If you just say operational funding for reoccurring expenses, what is that? Is that everything at middle school, is that everything at high school? Specifically to the elementary schools. We could pass a referendum that says reoccurring whatever, but us taxpayers are going to think, okay, they can still close our schools. If they're not going to specifically stick money into our community schools, why would we go for it? We don't have that trust established yet. We need that trust. We need to have, you know, a referendum question that reads, "Our community schools." Probably, let's all...
Quinn, you've got about a minute, yeah?
What?
You have about a minute, yeah?
So, I'm asking you guys to give the taxpayers an opportunity to support what we value. Obviously, the closure of Mattoon is affecting more than just Mattoon. I mean, it's affecting the Crestwood community, the Spring Valley community, and, I mean, several of the other schools too. I mean, it affects everybody. It's not a Mattoon issue, it's a, it's a whole district issue. And I know that there's several students that are upset about having to move from Crestwood to Spring Valley if the borders are changed. So it's just, it's not a Mattoon issue, it's a whole district issue. And I'm sure that Spring Valley and Crestwood parents and families would support a referendum that would say, "Hey, keep our schools open. This is what we value, this is what we want." I mean, history is right there.
Okay. Thank you, Quinn. Next up, we have Zach Kekeber.
I'm hearing references of minutes from the April 25th board meeting, in which a motion was made by Mr. McKenna, seconded by Mary to closing Mattoon Elementary utilizing their staff. I bring this up because during that meeting, we also see on a spreadsheet a number of $410,000 that the district would save by closing an elementary school, not necessarily Mattoon, any elementary school. So after the closing, I assume that they were expecting to save $410,000. I contacted the administration and asked for an itemized cost savings list of the Mattoon closing, and they told me that the 410 was an estimate probably conservative, which is fine. And in a couple weeks, McCarthy actually made me a spreadsheet of what they were going to save. Interestingly enough, I got the spreadsheet, and the only thing on there were teachers and staff, totaling $430,000. So the 410 was a conservative estimate. The problem was, it's only teachers and staff. The motion was made to keep the teachers and staff. Now, I'll give you this. You probably made it worth the janitors. That's worth $40,000. I went one step further, and I found those utility costs for Mattoon per year, $36,000. A grand total of $76,000 cost savings, if you don't get rid of any staff. Since Mattoon School has been closed, our one-day of open enrollment has amassed 43 students enrolling out of the district. That's a grand total of $288,000 of state aid. I do some quick math on this, subtract what they're saving, it's meaning, like, this is going to add the $212,000 deficit to next year's budget, just by closing Mattoon. Bottom line is, these numbers might not be exactly right, but I don't see any cost savings at this point. I feel that if there were proper steps, taking and closing, that you would not have the amount of open enrollment that you have. If they would have given us time, if they went online and looked, there's, there's guidelines to closing a school. Some of the guidelines include 12-month notice, a plan. There was no plan. Last time I was here, we didn't even talk to the bus company, and we wrote our new boundaries. To me, this was a haphazard motion to close, a plan-as-you-go, and a shoot-from-the-head. I don't think that's right. It's not fair to the teachers, it's not fair to the students, it's not fair to anyone. Schools shouldn't be closed like this. There's, there's research, it's, it's not good. One last thing, I'm not going to mention any names, but I was informed that a board member was boasting about winning the battle against Mattoon, because they finally got the school closed. I think this is despicable. I think when there's a school closing, especially an elementary school in a district, nobody wins. This isn't a losing or winning battle, this is a lose-lose. We need to do this with a heavy heart and careful hands. Not haphazard, just shut it down four months before it's supposed to open back up.
Can I ask a quick question? Are you saying that you would support Mattoon shutting down for the 17, 18 school year?
I would be much more able to accept that, yes.
I just want to address one matter of fact, which may be a moot point at this point, but the $410,000 that you were giving in terms of staff savings is a real savings, because staff members who are leaving the district from other buildings would have their positions filled by those people from the closed schools. Consequently, we would not have to go out and hire new people, and thereby we would affect the savings. So, the fact is that $410,000, which is a conservative number, would have, in most circumstances, been saved.
Okay. We thank everyone for their comments, and we will seek some other advice. We'll be moving on to the new business, and the first item of new business is student board representative report. But, Mr. McCarthy, we're going to do a little business before you report. Ryan served as our student, we're up on the board now, I think this is your second year?
Yep.
You were alternate last year, so. On behalf of unified school, Mr. Manigal, I'd like to present to you a certificate of commendation, and it's presented to Ryan McCarthy in recognition for your service on the Board of Education, on the date of May 24, 2016. Thank you. Ryan's been kind enough to attend our meetings and give us an update on the students' perspective on the school, and I sometimes think, especially at high school level, that sometimes we lose a little perspective on that, and that sometimes Ryan has given us some information that maybe we don't necessarily hear all the time, and it's been wonderful, so thank you. Let us know what's going on.
Well, last week for the seniors, everything was kind of wrapping down. Class closing, and we just kind of organized in a bunch of stuff. It's pretty great. Class picnic was at Jack Lake after graduation practice on Friday, so I'm really excited for that. Hoping the weather's kind of nice. For that, though, she's trying to organize for the seniors to visit their elementary schools that they attended, with their cap on, everything, to kind of talk to their old teachers and talk to the students, everything. Trying to inspire them a little bit, I suppose. Only two schools she has yet to hear back from, and that would be Crestwood and North, I think she said earlier this morning. So, I'd appreciate that, too. Hoping she hears back from Crestwood, because I feel like I'd like to visit my own school and see what it is.
Ryan, just so you know, Crestwood principal is out on maternity leave, so we'll have to email you tomorrow, and we'll make sure you're stuck.
All right. Thank you. And then, everyone's getting all ready for graduation, everyone's already sending out all their party invites, and kind of gathering people to their party as they can. A little contest, I suppose, almost. And everyone's pretty excited to go lock-in as well, seeing as... So far, I'd say finals for the students are going pretty well. There are some classes that were taken early, like some of the advanced placement courses, so those are, have already kind of worn down a little bit. And then teachers are just kind of like making little extensions to the finals for the underclassmen or the juniors down to do, kind of after the seniors leave, just so they have something to show for their progress.
So everything is whining down?
Everyone's getting all really excited for summer.
Good deal. Wonderful. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. See you Sunday.
Alrighty, then we will go on to next time, which is the board committee reports, and first up will be policy committee. Tim?
Okay. A meeting for the policy committee was held May 10th, the annual high school IMC. It was called the order at 7:03 by myself, chair. Committee members present, myself, Jeanie Long, Andy Mary, Terrick Gilzough. Other board members present, Mike Golding. There was administrators and principals, indifferent from administration president at the meeting. There were no public comments. The following policies were reviewed and were forwarded to the meeting tonight for our first reading. First one is 345.64, high school programs and activities.
Should we point out, Mr. Fuller, that the only additions here are the recognition of the statutory additions, of course, options, and virtual, Wisconsin Virtual School courses may need to be incorporated, and that's why we're bringing it to the board.
So, any more questions? Nothing, we'll... Is that it? That's the first reading for it? All good for that? Okay, then the second one for the first reading tonight is 346, student assessment.
This is once again for state requirement?
Yes.
Okay.
All good on that? Okay, that was reading. And the last one for the first reading for tonight was 347, pupil records.
All of these reflect changes on statutes.
So all good with them? Okay, and then we got some policies that were forwarded for a second reading for tonight. The first one is 345.6, graduation requirements.
And again, this reflects a statutory change that takes effect in September of 2016, requiring students to complete and successfully pass an examination, a civics examination, in order to run the poll.
Okay. All good on that? And the last, next one for the second reading tonight is 343.42, post-secondary enrollment options.
And this again is just a reflection of a number of options that are available in programs.
Okay. All good on that, second reading? Okay, that I move the board adopt revised policies 345.6, graduation requirements, and 343.42, post-secondary enrollment options.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Fuller, second from Mr. Mary, to adopt the two policies, 345.6 and 343.42. Any questions, comments?
Is this policy matter? I recommend it be roll call, but either way, it's fine on this.
Let's do a roll call, both of you.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Janssman?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka? Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Terrick Gilzough?
Yes.
And Mike Golding?
Yes.
We had another meeting scheduled, but with the committee changes, that meeting would not be in, intact, so the meeting was adjourned at 7:20.
Thank you, Ted.
Just grab the line.
Oh, okay. And then we, because of the change in the committee structure, there was no meeting made for the community relations communications committee, so we will go for next month and with the reassignments, please. Next up, other report will be on the Spring Valley fifth-grade trip, and Mr. Usher.
All right. Thank you, board. I'll ask to come back and share with you of the trip that we took. I brought with three students that have a bunch more, however, it's baseball season. The ladies and men are out playing the first game tonight. So I did bring three students, two moms that live with on our, on our trip. So, back in February, I think I came and asked for permission to take my class to Minnesota to go out of state to show our kids some of the concepts that we've been learning in a textbook in real life, at the Science Museum of Minnesota. And I had this big dream to, again, get that, the learning outside of the classroom, and came up with a plan, presented it to the BTO, applied for a grant, we received the grant to go at lower than our cost a little bit. So I made a presentation to the parents. Hey, if we could raise $2,300, I would love to take our kids and families to Minnesota. That would cover the bus and their tuition fee, or our admission fees, for Sea Life, the aquarium at the Mall of America, and our overnight stay at the Science Museum. I have two of my extremely aggressive moms up there when it comes to fundraising, both BTO people, by the way, and we devised a plan of how we could earn some money. And these plans worked out really well. I had students write letters to local businesses, asking them if they would support this trip by sponsoring either a student or just making a donation to the school. And our idea was, the more money we received, we could lower the cost and some chaperones, or maybe make this trip a little more special. We had spaghetti dinner, Miss Meister up there, she, Miss Meister? Yeah. She, she organized a spaghetti dinner at East Elementary. They're gracious to let us have it in the town, in the city, and we had a whole bunch of support. We had parents and past students I'd never met that asked to volunteer to serve spaghetti. That evening, between our spaghetti dinner and our silent auction, we raised $3,500 in one night. And we also had students out, like Josh there in the middle, Josh, over the, over the winter... And we also had students out, like Josh there in the middle, Josh, over the winter stacking firewood, shoveling sidewalks, and he earned, how much did you donate to the school?
$200.
$200 through his hard work. And it continues with another great story, Mr. Carley up there. He is a great, a great baker, he loves to cook, and his mom just threw out an idea on Facebook, my son's going on a trip, would you like to order some cookies and make a donation for the cookies? Mr. Carley, how many dozen cookies and brownies did you make?
I don't know.
Nineteen dozen, I heard at one time, and how much did you raise?
I bought $300.
$300. Same with Mr. Meister, he has a grandfather that worked in the district, Mr. Blood for many years, and I believe grandma, too, yeah. So we have connections, and through these connections and these nice letters and having the kids go out and do some of the elbow work, elbow grease, we ended up raising about $5,500, $5,700?
$5,500.
$5,500. So, this community does support definitely education, and they definitely came up with the small businesses. We ended up writing out over 110?
113.
113 thank you letters to people who donated to this trip, people who bought and made bids to our fundraising, our silent auction, so it was very rewarding. I was thanking 20, 30 thank yous, but yeah, 100 plus, so that was great. So I'm gonna turn on a quick little PowerPoint, and my three students and moms, I hope, can talk you through the PowerPoint, so the board members, if you could, just turn around, you'll find where you're at, if your neck won't get too sore, we're trying to keep this to about five or 10 minutes. My fifth graders are very long-winded, just like their teacher. Okay, this is our trip to Spring, or to the Mall of America, this is when we first got to the Mall of America, but Mr. Carley, would you lead us in explaining some of these pictures? Do we need to dim the lights for people in the back? Okay, Mr. Carley, can you help us out here?
Well, we got enough money to actually raise a coach bus. It had about six to eight TVs in it. It had riding seats, and they were really comfy. We watched about two movies on the way there, just to get us all excited for sitting in the museum. We watched right at the museum, and then we started watching Soul Surfer. This is when we got in the museum, everyone was just really super excited to go to Sea Life. That's my mom in the front there. And we were on our way there, it was really fun to be there.
Ladies and gentlemen, we had 17 students, excuse me, 18 students and 16 parents and grandparents. I had grandparents sleeping on a concrete floor to spend time with their kids, their grandkids at a museum, it was great.
That's us petting sea urchins, sea stars, all sorts of aquatic creatures. That's a group petting stingrays. That's me, I was really scared to touch them, because I thought they would like sting me or something.
I see how you have your sleeve rolled way up. This was a great experience, all but one student did find the courage to go down and touch the very unique skin texture of a stingray. And there probably were about 50 stingrays in this little tank, and they were really playful, and they would actually come up, they would swim deep, but when they came up where the people were, they would swim towards the surface. So it was really a good experience.
That's me with my dad and my mom. We were in a tunnel where we were just, we were just a tunnel with like fish swimming around and all sorts of stuff, sea turtles. I think that I was looking at a turtle there, and that's one of those big fishes, like a scythe, I don't know what they're called. Yeah.
So this is again a aquarium, I don't know, 1 million gallons? Kids?
1.2.
1.2 million gallons, and the kids were able to walk underneath the fish, the sharks, so it was a very neat experience for everyone involved. This is another family, a father of ours with a couple of his kids, again, we had almost a one-to-one ratio, chaperone the parent, or chaperone the student, it was really a great experience. With our money, with that money that we spent, or raised, we spent it on our kids. We were able to pay for also the chaperones, 100% to go on this trip, along with a meal at the Rainforest Cafe, which was a nice bill, but we had that in the budget, we budgeted well, and so our kids were able to experience, if you haven't been to the Rainforest Cafe, it's a very interactive meal, to say the least. Can anyone explain the meal?
There were thunder and lightning, and then the, all the animals just go wild, and sometimes they would just go wild, shaky trees, and just creeping around, making weird noises, and then this was one of the groups that were eating. It was really, really fun there, because every once in a while, the animals did it. That slider was this huge bird. He said that the patty was about this thick, and about this big around, and he couldn't eat the entire thing.
Needless to say, we ate very well on this trip. Another, a couple of our parents and two students. So once we got to the museum, we checked our luggage into a room, and we had some time to explore the museum on our own. And about an hour into it, when you come to an auditorium like this, and he wanted to teach us the rules, and they shared the rules with us in a game format of basically Jeopardy. We were one of six schools sleeping there that night. We were the only Wisconsin school sleeping there that night, and I, and I will definitely tell you, my parents can vouch, our students here from Annigo were the most gracious, respectful students at this museum that night. So I had two students go up, they were called up randomly to answer some questions about the rules, and we did quite well, am I correct, guys? We had Brayden go up, and then we had Chevy, Chevy go up, and they both did quite well in front of a pretty large crowd.
That is Izzy's dad walking just behind them, like the three feet, because the elevators would go up through all the exhibits. That's Mr. Jaeger, it's like he used it to read memories back then.
Old-fashioned medical devices, and some worked and some did not. Boys, can you tell the crowd how large this museum is? When you said we went to the elevators, why did, why did we not take the stairs?
Because there was a total of seven floors, and the seventh one was really tiny, and we ate on the sixth floor, and on one side, it just dropped down, and I, I got, I went out the door side, I was like, whoa, whoa.
Through this whole third floor, it's all interactive, so you can talk about wind pressure, why clouds are formed, why tornadoes form, and why, why can we make this ball elevate over a fan and then turn it 45 degrees, and the ball is still elevated over here and won't fall to the ground? So the kids were able to go through exhibit, exhibit, activity after activity, and the museum had, after, I think, believe 8 o'clock, really neat activities for the kids to try out. One was making gravity, how did NASA make machines, how do they know that their machines would actually move on the moon? Well, the kids were making little cars, who could build something that had the best traction, had, built something with best traction. They built stop rockets. So from 6 o'clock through 10 o'clock, it was all hands-on. And they practiced being a newscaster, Mary?
I look back at my pictures and videos after I got home, and I counted a pool of 53 exhibits, had hands-on clutch experiments.
So bedtime was interesting. After the, again, the museum closed at 5 o'clock, we had the museum till 9:30-ish, and then they kept us downstairs while they went up and they shampooed the rugs, so it's really nice, they cleaned as well as possible for us to sleep on their carpets, and we slept, boys, you guys take this part about where did we sleep?
We slept by the human body area.
That's me, I'm against that wall, I'm sleeping next to that skeleton.
There, there was human body slices of a woman, she had, like, either it was lung cancer, she had a black lung, so we slept near there.
So right next to Colden to the right, there's this eighth-inch slice of a human body, and it's a great way to utilize, study the different parts of a body, different muscle formations, and they slept within inches of it, it was quite interesting.
Oh, that's where my dad and my mom and me and I were going to sleep, then we found an area that was way more open, and we moved over there.
There's a bridge behind the astronaut, and that's where they slept. This is one of our student's moms, the student decided to check out, did not want to sleep next to a half-ayard mummy. So the student, the boy student slept was by some other friends.
So mommy sleeping next to a mummy?
Yes, mommy slept next to a mummy. So we found all kind of creative places to sleep, we had the entire human body part of the floor to us, it was really nice.
That is breakfast, just, Mr. Jaeger said that we were gonna plan early, and we were the first ones there.
Always arrive 10 minutes early. At the end of the, this is Friday morning now, at the end of the present, or the, our time at the museum, they had a, what they call science live, where they really have some very interesting science experiments. Do you boys want to share a couple of them?
There was one where she put a plastic bouncy ball.
Rocket ball.
And she bounced it before she put it into this liquid nitrogen, she put it in there, or I don't know how long, like it's like, no, like a minute or two?
Maybe a minute.
Like a minute or two, and then she put it out, she tried bouncing it, and it shattered.
So the...
There was another part where they had, she had a guy like blow above the balloon do about this size, and then she stuck it in there for three seconds, and when she pulled it out, it was just like super duper tiny, and then it also just deflated again. I was like...
So this is an hour goodbye that eve, or the next morning, with beautiful sunshine that day. Some of you might be wondering, you only needed $2,300, where did the other, you know, $3,000 go? Well, we were able to get, to pay for all students, all chaperones to go, we bought the meal at the Rainforest Cafe, we purchased a meal on the bus ride home. Then we also came up with a creative idea, which was about $900, we gave every student $50 spending money, so they could spend at the Science Museum gift shop, gift shop at Sea Life or the Mall of America, they might find something. So it was a really fun experience, we set the bar high for the first trip, and I brought the third grade in, we showed, we had a different movie that we showed, fourth grade, excuse me, they're all in, they're coming up to Mr. Jaeger right now. I'm mowing grass this summer, I don't have my money, so I hope I can come to you again for approval next winter to take Annigo Red Robins to a second trip, Spring Valley Blue Jays to a second trip to Minnesota. So we have, any questions from the board, we, the boys will be more than happy to answer. Any questions?
It looks like they had a wonderful time, and you guys represented your school and the district just wonderfully, thank you for doing a wonderful job.
I do want to shout out really quick if I can, just because I think it's important people know that we can utilize the staff for other reasons. Terry Gilger was wonderful in helping us with spaghetti dinner, and that would mean just to plan out the portions and what the kind of things we needed to help us save some money. And I think it was really important that our kids learned that if they worked together as a group, they all came and served a spaghetti dinner and worked with people, they took their empty plates, they did a lot of things, we had board members that came, tons of Annigo District people were there, we had businesses there, we had people donate $20 for two cookies, just to stop, and they visited with people, and they, you know, paid on silent auction items, so we really were overwhelmed by the response we had. Our goal for the spaghetti dinner was $500. So as you can tell, we did really well, but we had a lot of support from the community, a lot of grandparents, a lot, I mean, the grandparents that came and slept on the floor were phenomenal, they did not complain about a thing, they walked up four places, staff has never said we were carrying sleeping bags and backpacks all over. So it was a really good bonding experience, and I told Mr. Jaeger the first day, I did not want any child to feel like they would be left out, or any parents to feel like they couldn't go, so we wanted to raise enough money to make sure that anyone who said they wanted to go could go. So we had enough money left over that, and we said at the end, if there's anybody else that wants to come, they can join us, and we did have a couple, they came kind of toward me on and said they wanted to join us. And so it was just a really good experience, any of the kids that wanted a T-shirt from there, we were able to purchase a T-shirt on behalf of our group on the funds we raised, so they all, they all got the T-shirt for a memory. So it was just kind of neat to see all the kids on the same level, everybody had the same amount to spend, everybody had a part in it, and we are donating at least $750 to next year's class from our class.
Cool. Thank you, we appreciate your time.
Well, thank you, Bill. Okay, that was very nice, glad to see the kids all had a wonderful time, support and the parents and the grandparents also. Okay, we will move on to board action, and the first item on that will be the 2015-2016 budget. Tim?
Mike, I've got several items under that topic area, and the first document I want the board to go ahead and pull up would be the year-end close-up procedures, and this is really nothing new, we've been doing this same procedure for a number of years, but I thought I'd just basically kind of just quickly review it. Essentially, we use the accrual basis of accounting, so essentially what that means is that we take the expenditures and revenues associated with a particular school year and really account for those regardless of when we receive any of the revenues from the expenses. So to give you an example, on the revenue side, we're still gonna, in July, we're gonna have a per pupil paid adjustment, we'll have a final adjustment and equalization aid, and then our computer aid, and all of that we're gonna receive after the actual school year closes, June 30. On the expense side, very similarly, our teachers, the majority of our 12-month teachers are paid through July with benefits that go through August, and all those expenses and revenues then are lumped in the 15-16 school year. So we differ from like private business accounting, where you typically would have a year under a month, and that would have hard, fast data times. So right now, activities in the business office, in particular Lori Leiderman is working with all the grant administrators, particularly Cindy Fisher, and we're looking at grants and the final requirements of those grants, and right now she's just completed Title I and Title II grants. We don't get our allocations yet for next year, so we like to have some carryover as the start of the next school year, and we want to make sure that those expenditures that are yet to be done this year, along with the carryover, meet the grant requirements. So that's a big initiative that she's working on. I talked about 12-month employees and rolling up those salaries in July and their benefits in August. Laura Lewis in the payroll department will be working on, we call them summer payroll payables, so they're, they're a liability account that we go ahead and charge that expense going forward, and then we issue those checks that in July and pay for those benefits in August. So we're making sure those calculations are done. Don Schrader is working on our health reimbursement account, and you can think of that as almost like a portion of our health insurance that is self-funded. We're making sure we're funding that at the proper level, and likewise with our dental insurance, we're pretty much self-funded there, too, and so we want to make sure that those accounts are balanced and that we're making the right projection going forward as to what we need to put in those. Special ed is another big area that we're reviewing, and we'll be working with Karen Baker, and we, we talk about maintenance of effort, and essentially with a federal program like IDEA, we have to show that we maintain local level support. level support for that program. And it has to be consistent from one year to the next. And so we go through a calculation to prove that we are supporting it at the local level appropriately. And if we don't meet that requirement, we have to apply to DPI for exceptions. And if we don't get the exceptions, we have to reallocate funds back to the general fund. So it's another big activity that we're doing. And then I described in that little handout of yours, the process that we do for handling invoices and expenditures that occur after the June board meeting. And so we have invoices that were received after that June board meeting and the first week in July that need to be accounted back into the office and they need to get paid prior to the July board meeting. So it's just a process that we outlined. Our preliminary audit is scheduled for June 15th and 16th. And then the major audit then would be August 1st through the 4th. So we've got plenty of activity over the next two months to round out last fiscal year. In terms of the status of the budget, this year's budget is partially for me being probably conservative in some of the estimates that I had hand in, we're actually shaping up pretty good. We've had a very mild winter, utilities, and we've talked about transportation before. So I just thought I'd touch on a couple of areas. First one I want to touch on is staffing. I would say in the staffing budget, we've had probably the neighborhood of 400 and some odd adjustments, minor adjustments to the staffing budget. One of those is insurance. With people either deciding to, when we anticipated they were going to take a family, they took single, a lot of our young, new teachers don't take any insurance. So we've had, we've had some adjustments there. And in particular, when we look at, we were projecting a 6% increase in the insurance premium. And we're getting about a 7.5% decrease than what we anticipated. So that's just a huge spread. And when I talked about those insurance benefits that we're booking, we're going to pay in July and August, we get the benefit in this year's budget because the premium is due July 1. So we're going to have two months of a much lower premium than we anticipated. And I'm estimating that that summer payroll payables because of insurance premiums is going to be close to $90,000 less than what we had anticipated. We've had lower sub-costs this year to the tune of almost $10,000. We're a little bit unique where we, when we have staff out on long-term leave or maybe workers comp, they're not drawing payroll. We've had almost $20,000 less staffing cost as a result of some of those leaves. In January, we knew that we would be, they announced the employer's share of the Wisconsin retirement system contribution. That was down by a small portion and that savings from our standpoint represents about $14,000. And as I mentioned, those staff changes, that resulted in another $37,000 in what we had originally budgeted back in August. So all told, that number in staffing changes and insurance premiums results in somewhere between $170,000 and $180,000 in savings that we're rolling up right now. Another item was open enrollment. So you heard tonight about people either coming into the district or leaving the district. And again, I take a conservative approach to how we look at that and not having gone through, we make an estimate prior to the third Friday count. And then we also count again in January. So the original budget was set up with an open enrollment out of 110. We ended up with 92. And I was thinking, well, I don't know if I want to adjust that because I don't know what's going to happen in January. So I didn't do anything with that number. Our open enrolled in was about where we anticipated. The net effect is we had an open enrollment where I conservatively estimated our expense with more people leaving than did of almost $100,000. We've touched on transportation where we didn't hit any of our fuel escalator clauses and our total mileage this year is down. And I think when you have one contractor, you're just more efficient in the way you lay your bus routes out. So we have an anticipated savings in transportation of $150,000 above and beyond what we had budgeted. And then finally would be in our transfers. So I talked about that maintenance of effort earlier. That requires what we call a transfer of Fund 10 dollars into the special education in the Fund 27. We've had some changes in that budget where our handicap aids were higher than we anticipated. And again, our transportation costs for special education were lower than we anticipated. So the net effect of that is our transfer, how much we have to transfer into 27 from the general fund is about $100,000 less than what we had budgeted. So I threw out a lot of numbers, but essentially, you know, we have a 31 and a half, or 30 and a half million dollar budget. We right now are anticipating to having funds of about $500,000 remaining as of now. So as we go forth now, I want that in the back of your mind. I mentioned before about the HRA, the health, it's a premium-only health retirement and health reimbursement equivalent. And in there, I have a summary document that was approved by the board back in, I think, January of 2015. We have not made any adjustments to that plan. Each year, the board authorizes a contribution into the, it's in a, it's in a fund called Fund 73. And you authorize administration to make that transfer. I had spoken to you about 100, about $170,000, $180,000 in staffing savings over budget. And we have right now about 110 or 111 eligible staff members to receive an HRA distribution. One of the things that the current plan says is teachers have to complete six years of service. Well, when you look at our turnover rate, that, we get a lot of turnover in the first probably five to eight years and even, even sooner. And so the, I want to use this as a retirement enticement so that young staff members will see their account to grow. And so I'm asking the board to, even though I know that we need a minimum of $110,000, I'd like to change the plan over the course of the summer and be able to get employees right after their first year some distribution. The way the plan is set up is employees must retire from the district. If they don't retire from the district, the monies are forfeited back into the account and we can redistribute them to existing staff. So it's not like we're, we're going to lose the money if they would leave, but it's a way for a teacher to have, you know, it's not a significant amount of money, but $4,000, $5,000 sitting in front of them saying, you know, if I stay here, this will be a significant benefit by the time I'm ready to retire. So I'm asking the board to, to go ahead and let us transfer 200,000 into that account. And we also have some adjustments that, that just have to be made for some, some staff members that are, were out of the, out of the account and are now back in it, but that's a little more detail that I need to explain to you tonight. So Don, would you like me to continue with the report or have them take a motion on that? Motion?
I need to do an independent motion on the sinking fund. What do you want them to do with the HRA?
Okay. So I'm asking for the board to allow administration not to exceed $200,000 for distribution into the HRA in the old account.
Yeah, I think they have a motion to report them to do that.
Right. And would you like me, I'm asking, do you want me to continue or do you want them to take action for it? Well, so...
I, I think, Tim, because the way it's, we have it structured, why don't you proceed and because a lot of what you're going to add on here is going to add into that same motion.
All right. Tim, I just have a question regarding this formula for distribution. It would appear there that people who have 10, 14 years are getting more money than people who have 15.
What we did, that, that initial plan was a summary that Mary Jo presented to the board when we established the trust. So it kind of lays out how we looked at, we redlined, we used to have post-employment insurance benefits. So when we redlined folks and said, okay, those with X number of years got the post-employment benefits, those below that did not receive any benefits. They were prorated in their amount because they didn't have enough years to earn to get before they retired. So this is the...
This was a pool of money that was there?
Correct. Correct.
So they have money in the account.
Correct. So now what we do going forward, the last couple of years we've done it, the board has authorized, if we have monies available, $1,000 per individual to be used, to be put in that account. Other questions?
Yes. Okay, Tim.
Okay. I've talked to the board about the sinking fund, Fund 46. And essentially, you're going to hear Mark later talk about the telephone project. But when we, we're, we're taking to accumulate all this money that I talked about tonight, we're looking at literally hundreds of account numbers and pulling those funds together. And we're doing that in April, May and June. And my purpose of suggesting that we look at a sinking fund is first, it's, it's an area where we can bank on, like if we need to do a project five years from now, we can bank on having funds in there. And rather than try to rush, rush the process, then we would have a whole fiscal year to do proper planning, to do project management and to really do it right, rather than trying to crunch unexpended funds into a one or two-month window. So what the state statute requires is first, you have to approve a 10-year maintenance plan. And we've been through that with the CISA 10 report. And then you have to make a signed resolution that we can establish a trust. DPI needs that as evidence. And then we have to show them that we have a segregated account where those funds would be placed. And we would, I would recommend that we would do that similar to the way we make our investments. And we would, you know, invest in a fixed rate account and we would keep it secreted in. The downside of the, doing the Fund 46, you cannot touch the money until after year five. The biggest benefit of the Fund 46 is it's an aidable expense. So when we have, when we build fund balance, the monies that we put into fund balance, we don't receive shared costs on. We don't, we don't get aid for that portion of the money that we put into fund balance. You get it when you pull it out of fund balance and expend it. In Fund 46, you get the aid just like it's an expense. What I see districts doing is, it's only been in existence for two years. You see districts that put a dollar in the first year and they do that to start the clock. So it's not a first in, first out. At the end of five-year period, you can be using your Fund 46 to fund projects specifically identified in your 10-year maintenance fund. And it's not, I can only spend a dollar in the first year. It's, the fund is not available to you.
Good. Pretty well explained.
And what I would suggest that in June then, I'd make a recommendation not to exceed a certain dollar value to put into Fund 46.
Okay. I believe we would be at first looking for a motion regarding the Fund 46.
I move the board reaffirm the CISA 10 report as the district's 10-year capital improvement plan and adopt the resolution establishing a Fund 46 sinking fund with an initial earmark not to exceed $200,000. Second.
We have a motion from Mr. McKenna, second from Mr. Mary. Bobby, roll call vote please.
Scott Jansma?
Yes.
Tiddy Lon?
Yes.
Patrick McKinnon?
Yes.
Jessica Meehan?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Tara Gislow?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
And Mike Holder?
Yes.
Okay. Do we want to discuss the phone plan here?
I would. Yeah, we got to have a combined cause.
We have a combined motion. So Mark, you want to talk about that or...
I want to even reduce it. So a couple of months ago, I started talking about the phone systems at the elementary schools. And we have $45,000 right now that's unexpended, I think it's $42,000, unexpended in capital equipment. And I had told Mark that we should start looking at replacing the 15 to 20-year-old phones at the elementary schools. And so I, I knew from prior work that that number was going to be close to 15,000 to 20,000 per building. So I thought we could get one or, one, two or possibly even three schools done. And so with that, I asked Mark to start doing some work and he's going to fill me in on what he's got to report.
So taking on that, with the elementary, like you said, it's very old. We've been pretty lucky that we have a vendor that has a, like a junk pile that when one of our pieces break down in the elementary is that he's able to get pieces and parts from those that they've stored and been able to get them working again. So while I was digging up and finding out, is, I was really trying to find out when those elementary schools were, the phones were put in and I couldn't find anything. I went back at least 15 years and couldn't find anything. So, but digging into that, I found that the shared phone system that's between the admin building of high school and middle school, the Cisco phones, has an end of life as of December 31st, 2016. So an end of life on that means that we will not be able to buy any more extensions of software or the actual server that houses that software is also end of life. So we're talking about a need that, will it, will it all of a sudden die on January 1st? No. But if something happens after midnight on December 31st, nobody's going to support us. We're not going to be able to call up and text and say, can you come and help us figure this out? We're going to be solely on our own and the Cisco is notorious that sometimes I think they cut it off a couple of minutes early. So we've, we're finding ourselves in a pretty critical situation as far as not just elementary being old, but now involving all the buildings by the end of the year that something, you know, needs to, you know, happen or at least, that's what I'm here for, to look into that. You should have a spreadsheet that, that goes over some numbers while you start to look at that. And this is, as a taxpayer and just happens to work for the district, I take asking for these commitments pretty serious. It's, it's a lot of money we're asking for here, but, and with the precarious situation that we find ourselves in and we need to pay attention to any of the, that we don't want any of these breakdowns happening. And we really can't afford any of our buildings being without a phone system for any length of time. So we can go over what those numbers actually mean in that spreadsheet. You can see at the very top of how much we're paying out monthly for just anything related to what we do with our phone system. Right down to like those pot lines, PRI, the Charter Spectrum, all that stuff, that's what we pay per month right now. The first option is from Frontier. And this would be a hosted option for them. What I mean by hosted is that they will take care of absolutely everything as far as maintaining and upgrading and doing everything for that server for as long as we want to pay that monthly fee out. They started us off on a five-year plan. So the monthly cost is figured out at $9 per phone for each month. And after that five years, that would drop down to $6 a phone. Then Frontier, like I said, does all the upgrades, all the caring and everything so that if something goes down, Frontier's there 24/7 taking care of, making sure everything is running. All we have to do then is put the phones in place, make, take care of the users, make sure they have the correct extensions, stuff like that on our end. But they're the ones that are taking care of the actual maintaining and process of that server. And there's really not much of an end of life there. It'll get old enough that we may have replaced, but that's going to be down the road. It's not going to be the Cisco situation where you just cut... It's not going to be the Cisco situation where you just cut off. This plan takes care of, this plan and option two actually, would take advantage of the fiber running between the buildings and that wireless connections to the buildings. We wouldn't have to be relying on that copper line, the old copper buried lines going up to those buildings now. And the outages that we've had this year has been because of the copper, not because of the operating system or anything like that. So the only thing that would be connecting with that copper is those pots for security because if power goes down or anything like that, that we still have a couple of phones and lines coming in for the 911 calls, and the permar security that we use for the district means two lines in there to maintain those. Okay? The camera corner, that's an outright purchase at that amount. That means we take care of everything, the server, the upgrades, the software upgrades. And we still would need the PRI and the potslines, and then their help per se, as we needed, would average about $300 a month. So that's where that number is coming from. Okay? Option three is basically a branch off of what Tim and I discussed was trying to do two to three buildings. But then, as we kept digging into the numbers, you can see that that monthly cost started to raise. If we're going to do two to three of the buildings, and then do an upgrade to that Cisco system that I said was end of life as of December 31st, and then still maintain the potslines for the whole district, the help desks, the inform and cast is what we use at the middle school, high school for our run their bell system. All that stuff that's listed down there would be handled by Frontier on that vendor one. So more of an advantage on that particular unit, so. And what I did at the bottom was, I wanted to make sure that everybody was on the same page as far as the 60-month comparison. Like I said, Frontier is the one that started to base their whole estimate on a 60-month plan, so I took all three plans out for 60 months. And you can see at the very bottom how much similar all three plans ended up being. So as it stands right now, I would, if we could swing in, I would highly recommend the option one, only because they're taking care of the software, they're taking care of that server, they're there 24/7 to handle any kind of downtime at all, and they've just done excellent through this whole process, so. If there's any questions about any of those numbers, how the process?
Looks pretty straightforward to me. And realistically, the Frontier option, as you said, they're taking care of everything.
Yeah, the only thing we have to take care of is, is our own local buildings as far as setting up a phone and setting up the users as far as having extensions. With option one and option two, if I'm at Spring Valley, I can pick up that phone and dial a four extension and get ahold of Tim. I don't have to dial all seven numbers to get ahold of central office and then dial Tim. Okay? So I mean, it's going to be a centralized thing. We'll have control in one unit right now with option one and one, and two, it's a centralized controlled environment, so I can change an extension at Spring Valley without going anywhere. I can just go into the server. Right now, every building is basically its own entity. If I want to change a number and extension at Spring Valley, I have to drive out there, connect my laptop up to their system, and then do all the work I needed to do, and then come back.
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, does option three include all the schools?
Yes. Well, yeah, well, I mean, you could see that the Frontier hosted would be the, would be still Frontier taking care of, but only those three city elementarys. And then PRI would be, like we have now, is similar to the admin high school, middle school, and the Cisco, the upgrade to the Cisco would be just for the admin high school and middle school. And potslines, again, cover everybody so that they have that emergency lines going out. So on the right-hand column there, it tells you what each one covers. The option three is really similar to what we're doing now, except that we're at least upgrading three of the buildings.
So you had a recommendation of the option one?
Yes, I was, I would definitely go, only because in option two, we have to take care of absolutely everything, and option one, they're handling the hard part, or handling the basic, easy part of the whole process.
Do you have other questions, Mark?
Then, Mark, in terms of, what are you asking the board to approve tonight? You're just asking for the upfront cost?
Yes, the upfront cost of option one would be 115, correct. And that option includes the monthly costs for the first 12 months, so the first 12 months are, other than the potline, there's no other.
Okay. Anybody else have questions? If not, we'd be looking for a motion, then, please.
I move the board to approve the use of Cisco here in 2016, unexpended funds to make a contribution not to exceed $200,000 to the district HRA plan, and authorize the administration to proceed with the purchase and installation of a new phone system for Prosper, $115,000 with irate subsidy and two payments spread over the current and next fiscal years.
Second.
Okay. Motion from Mr. McKenna, second from Ms. Mary. Any other discussion on the motion?
So that was option one?
Yes. Okay. Anybody else? Bobby, roll call, please.
Jenny Long.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
Tim Fuller.
Yes.
Tara Gisso.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Scott Jansma.
Yes.
And Mike Holden.
Yes.
Okay, very good. Can you, can you take, um, take five? I believe we can, yeah. We'll recess for five minutes for the request of Ms. Gelsada, stretch her legs a little whatever, so. We'll take five people. So we'll be back in here at 8:25, please. Bobby, if you please note on the record that Ms. Gelsa took help, and she left that approximately a quarter. So we'll be moving on to item two, which is purchasing supplies for beginning of the 2016-2017 school year.
Right.
Oh, are we, I'm sorry, I thought Patrick was there. My apologies. I missed him, Andy.
Do you know how to turn the wire, my wire system's off.
I'll see if he's on.
Thank you.
There he is.
Oh, there he is. Patrick, I'm sorry, I missed you. I'm sorry. It's all right, Mike. I never thought you'd come in right down the end. I missed you terribly sorry about that. We have a moment, please.
There's not a list.
David, do you, you want to-
Okay, real briefly, we ask the principals and their departments to start planning for next school year. And so we've got requisitions sitting ready to go for buying supplies for next school year. This is a very routine matter. Right now, I know that, you know, we probably got in the neighborhood of about $50,000 sitting there. By the end of next month, we'll probably have between 100 and 150 ready to go. So we're just asking authorization so that we can go ahead and release those and have them ready for August, so they can be dispersed in the buildings when the time comes.
Okay. I'll be looking for a motion, then, please.
I move the board to approve the expenditures for the acquisition of supplies for the 16-17 school year.
Second.
Motion for Mr. McKenna, second by Ms. Mead. I'll have to correct myself there.
Big difference.
All righty. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
Tim Fuller.
Yes.
Andy Mary.
Yes.
Scott Jansma.
Yes.
Jenny Long.
Yes.
And Mike Holden.
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you, everyone. We'll move on to the next item, which is open enrollment. Bobby.
There's two attachments on board docs, and just want to look at, the first one being open enrollment in. These are kids coming into the district that have applied during the open enrollment period, February 1st to April 29th, projecting 12 new coming in with the 215-16 being at 37 for a total in for the 16-17 year at 49 students. The open enrollment out, those kids leaving the district, projected for 16-17. You can see by the list, the current number is 96 with 59 applications that have come through the OPA website for a total of 155 hours. And each of those applications is noted on there where those students are enrolling out from.
Okay. Very good. And this does not require any board action?
No, not.
Just the notification that those are going on. So thank you, Bobby. Next item, lab.
Yeah, we would like to proceed with the fab lab, even though we didn't get the grant this year. Did have a phone conference with Weedick, our grant writer, on Monday, and turns out that rather than two or three grant applications, they received over 90. So we were not among those who were blessed with one of the grants for the amount of money available, encouraged to reapply next year, but I think we need to get moving on it. We have, we're closing in on a space at the high school that can be used for this, and we would like to be able to acquire some of the equipment necessary for the lab over the course of the summer so that we can have it moving. So we're asking that we authorize an expenditure of $25,000 initially.
Which I believe is what we have already discussed, that we were willing to take out of fund balance today.
Do you have any idea that you would be willing to, fund balance if necessary to move the fab lab along?
Yes. Looking for a motion, then, please.
I move the board to approve the expenditure of $25,000 to initially equip the district's fab lab. It is understood that this expenditure may come from fund balance.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion for Mr. Fuller, second for Mr. McKenna. Any discussion?
Can we reapply for this grant?
Yes. Yeah, and we will. One of the things that we did discuss is the fact that the deadline for the grant applications was really, really awkward because it came right after the winter break. So Weedick is looking at moving for this next round, moving the application deadline so that districts really have more time while they're in session to be dealing with the applications.
Tim, it sounds like we'll have enough, perhaps, unexpended funds for this year where it probably won't come out of fund balance.
I would think that, that's reasonable.
It's just $25,000 that will be combined with the money that we've raised from local industries for the fab lab?
We haven't raised money from local industries for the fab lab at this point. That's something we have to do going forward, but we have to have a place for them to know if this is where it's going to be, and this is the equipment, and what other equipment should we be-
So up until this point, they're not game to get in for what might be?
No, no. They will. Well, we do have some businesses that are going to be part of our advisory board, and I anticipate some of them are going to be willing to share some costs because they'll be users.
I know we talked about a formal fundraising plan for the school forest initiative there. Is there any way that, to yoke perhaps the fab lab initiative and the school forest initiative, or is there thought, excuse me, are there thoughts about that, or other approaches?
We haven't had that, that particular thought, but that's an interesting, kind of outside-the-box sort of thing with the wood technology that exists in, you know, Langley County with forestry and with the timber industry and so forth, certainly makes great deal of sense. And it's true that one of our willing partners as an advisory board is a wood products company here, so I think it makes some sense to look at that. The other things that we've talked about tying to it is having some conversation with the hospital about the possibility of having a portion of the lab in a clean environment where there could be some health-related and medical-related kinds of things, and then also something along the line of a clean area for food, nutrition kinds of things. So there are a number of applications that may not necessarily be part of other districts' fab labs, but I think are appropriate to Langley County where we are.
Anyone else? Hearing no further discussion. Bobby, roll call vote.
No. Voice vote. I'm sorry, I'm looking for the phone.
You're looking the wrong way.
Jessica Mead.
Yes.
Danielle Yushka.
Yes.
Tim Fuller.
Yes.
Tara. Andy Mary.
Yes.
Scott Jansma.
Yes.
Jenny Long.
Yes.
Patrick McKenna.
Yes.
And Mike Holden.
Yes.
Thank you.
All righty. Next up, third-quarter monitoring reports. Be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to accept third quarterly academic monitoring reports as meeting compliance having made satisfactory progress toward achieving board goals and expectations.
Second.
Motion from Ms. Mead, second from Ms. Long, to accept the monitoring reports. Any discussion? I know we went through these at the committee, the whole meeting, and there was a good, long, and fruitful discussion at that time, but if there's any questions or additional stuff that anybody has, or if it'd be a time.
Well, I would just ask, perhaps in the future with those monitoring reports, perhaps they could be set up for after data is collected and gone through, and we've had the past two years. You know, data is not completed at the time of the report.
No, and you can't-
It would be nice to have that perhaps a little after, so that the data could be presented rather than having to defer on that.
Yeah. What we've done with the third monitoring report is to simply report to the board on those students who are demonstrating progress, who were identified for monitoring for their progress, primarily because they were falling behind. And I think that's a worthwhile thing to do, and you're absolutely right. The window for assessment from the state tends to run us into late May, and so that data is typically included in the year-end summative monitoring report, and, you know, it would be a matter of the board and Frankie Bryan agreeing that we could tear back three reports, and if that's what you want to do, it certainly is up to you.
Work that out.
Yep.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, lose on the voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next up, NTC contract for alternative high school service. An annual expenditure. We partner with NTC to provide program for high school diploma completion. You see the amount there, it's not a substantial increase over last year, I gathered, so we are recommending that we just remove that contract.
Okay. Be looking for a motion, please.
I move the board to approve the renewal of its contract for essential technical knowledge for the 2016-17 year in the amount of $66,727.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Mead, second by Mr. Jansma. Discussion. It's a good idea.
I'll watch your side.
I'll watch your lines.
Hearing no discussion. Bobby, you will call vote, please.
Danielle Yushka? Kim Fuller?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Very good. Next item, authorization for QZAB.
Yeah, our application is in. We are waiting to hear. What I do know is that we are not going to receive probably anywhere close to the amount we're requesting here. It turns out that the state had slightly less than $12 million to distribute. It had over 29 requests from districts for this money. And my understanding is that the Department of Public Instruction is going to prorate and allocate so that nobody's left out cold about anything, which probably means we'd be getting somewhere around in reality about $2.5 million. So, you'll notice the motion and the resolution are worded as up to 7.925. This is money that can be used interest-free to address or begin to address at least the high priority items on the CISA 10 report, which we just adopted as your technical plan. We do have opportunity to pair this with the Energy Savings Act 32. It also allows you to go forward. This is a petition process, however, since the referendum was not approved. This process requires that you post a 30-day notice, which we would try to start tomorrow in the paper. And at the end of that time, if nobody has forwarded a petition to force a referendum, you would be automatically authorized to issue that.
Clear. Be looking for motion, please.
I move the board approve and adopt the resolution of intent to issue up to 7.925 million in interest-free debt instruments to the Qualified Zone Academy Bond Program for purposes of upgrading and replacing infrastructure in its eligible schools.
Do we have a second?
Second.
P is four. P, a motion from Ms. Mead, second from Mr. Fuller. Discussion?
And this requires a 10% match, is that correct?
Yes. In time, yeah.
In time match?
Yeah.
And where's that coming from?
That is coming from the National Education Foundation out of State University of New York. They fund these throughout. Federal government has contracted with them to try to get the QZAB money distributed across the country. So, they work with all states and they provide, I've forgotten the name of the academy off the top of my head, but they provide an academy that is STEM-oriented and uses instructional materials, training for teachers, instructional materials used in the classroom for both blended and virtual instruction as well as direct instruction. And so, they'll work directly with our teachers. Much of the stuff is virtual and online in terms of training, so we don't have to have people, you know, physically relocating away.
Just to clarify, this, we would have to levy, we would have to raise taxes to do this?
No. No, this by its very nature is paid out of your revenue limit. We don't levy this.
Well, why, what's the 30-day?
The 30-day period is a period that is enforced by the statute that says that if citizens wish to force a referendum on this, they can petition the board to do so. And then you do run a referendum. But if that happens, then you can levy for it.
Wait, I thought that this is requesting, this would levy for a bond that we would have to pay back? I mean, even if it's interest-free, you would still have to pay for it?
Yes, you still have to pay for it, but you would pay for it. If you exhausted the 30, if you exhausted the 30-day period with no petition, you would repay that period, that money for whatever period of time you decided, depending on how you wanted to handle it. If it was a promissory note, it would be a 10-year repayment. If it was a bond, you could run it out to 20 years of repayment at no interest. And you would pay for it out of your, whatever is your current revenue stream.
So, you mean, so we actually wouldn't be able to levy? And then we would have to pay for that out of fund balance or...
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
I assumed that this was a levy.
I understood this differently, so...
Yeah, I did too.
It's not a levy. You can pair it with Act 32, which is energy savings statute that allows you to do energy-related projects and repay through a modest levy that is tied to your utility savings, if I understand it. Is that not right, Tim?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, wait, I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. So, there, so we would be allowed to raise the levy for energy savings?
You would if you funded approvable projects through Act 32. Yes, you could do it that way. QZAB by itself, through the petition process, does not contemplate raising the levy. The Fund 30, Act 32, I'm sorry, Act 32 legislation allows you to raise the levy. Since Act 32, energy-saving projects, including HVAC, lighting, probably some electrical, are all high priority projects that are in your CISA 10 10-year plan that you've adopted and would be the things that you would be attacking with the QZAB money anyway, you would be able to levy some portion. I don't know, I can't tell you it would be 100%, but you would be allowed to levy some portion of your payment.
So, it would be, so it would be a levy through Act 32? Because a lot of our things, so you miss, I don't mean, I just want to clarify. So, we would raise, you would put up, that's why there's the 30-day? Because potentially we could be doing a levy independent of a referendum to raise taxes to pay for this?
Well, you could go Act 32 without the QZAB money and raise the levy.
Okay.
If you chose to do it. The QZAB money gives you an interest-free repayment. And by itself would not necessarily require a levy increase or involve levy increase.
Is there a reason to put out this resolution for a promissory note today? And could we wait till after we get the, get what we're going to potentially receive or potentially could use for QZAB? I guess I would feel more comfortable having like a clear number, maybe having the ad hoc committee weigh in about things that, you know, facilities-wise makes sense. I mean, I...
It's entirely up to the board to make that decision. I'm recommending to you that you go ahead and adopt the resolution tonight. There is nothing that compels you to accept the money. And if you decided after passing the resolution and finding out what actual distribution is, you didn't want the money, well, our district has past practice and history of returning the money and turning it down, so you could do it again.
I think the only, perhaps, I guess, rather than, perhaps a reason not to would be that if someone were to file a petition and put a referendum forward for it. I mean, that might be just in general distracting with money that we may or may not, you know, necessarily put forward and use. I guess I would like to have some clarity first, I mean, for that, before we jump into that. It sounds like there's not, from the QZAB standpoint and our application, it won't be affected if we don't act on this.
We will be notified sometime within probably the next week and a half, two weeks of what our allocation would be. I do know it will be approved at some level.
So, we could, we could vote on this in June with the actual sum rather than a random sum?
Sure. If that's what you chose to do, you can do that. Yep.
Hey, that's okay, okay.
I have one more question. It's really not related to what Patrick's talking about there. But in Act 32, does the CISA 10 report serve as the, all the information we need for energy? Or do we need additional energy, an additional plan to do things?
The statute requires that we use what's called an ESCO. So, it's an energy service company. So, there are, it's performance contracting. And the state has identified contractors that provide this service. The contractors would review the CISA 10 report. They essentially then do the equivalent of a design build where their engineers would design a system. The statute requires that they calculate the energy savings and they verify the energy savings. And then the levy that we talk about associated with Act 32 would be, it's reduced, the amount you can levy is reduced by the energy savings that you're captured in comparison. So, like if you had a regular bond issued for $1 billion that you had to pay back and you add $100,000 to a savings, you could only levy the $900,000. So, it's a combination of the energy savings plus the bond issuance, the payment on the bond. So, you have to use the energy savings to pay it first.
Energy savings over how many years? One year?
It's over the life of the bond.
Right. So, if you're saving $100,000, yeah.
So, it's, so each year, you know, and maybe it's...
So, to do some building project, we're going to pay $1 million right now. We can have the bond for $900,000, but we got to come up with the other $100,000.
No, I'm misrepresenting. If you, let's say you did a $10 million renovation across all the buildings in the district, and we would issue bonds for 10-year payment. And so, we would have the equivalent of $1 million on the levy to pay those, pay those bonds back. The, both the principal and the savings are combined. So, we reduce the amount that we levy by the energy savings.
You were mentioning about the certified contractors. So, do you, is it a bidding process then? Like, if you say, well, we want, you know, this better?
You, districts typically put out a RFQ, a request for qualifications, and then the board selects, typically selects the, I'm going to call it the project manager or the ESCO actually. And then the projects within that ESCO, they give you like an estimate of what that project's going to cost, and then they design, build it, and bill you accordingly.
So, are you locked into what they, I mean, you're essentially locked into what they're going to say costs?
Well, and I think that's the agreement that you have between the owner and the energy performance contractor. So, you'd have to be careful in how you enter that agreement. But essentially, it gets down to the comfort, how comfortable are you at doing the petition process? Now, if Dr. Childs talks about QZAB within the revenue limit, there are districts that could use a QZAB that maybe would either typically would under levy, and then you would have the authority to use the QZAB and you could pay that money back inside the revenue limit. We levy to the max, so we would, if we want to do it within the revenue limit, we would have to budget that accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Can you let us go to roll for vote? Bobby?
Uh, who made the motion here?
Thought we had one on the floor.
I have one.
Yes, we do. It was Mead, I, Ms. Mead, and second by Mr. Fuller.
Okay. The vacuum is good, by the way.
All you still call vote, please.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Andy Mary?
No.
Scott Jensen?
I say yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
No.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Mike Foley?
Yes.
Six, two, motion carries. Okay, very good. Next item up is meal prices for 2016-2017. Be looking for motion, please.
I move the board approve the following meal prices for 2016-17 school year. Elementary breakfast, $1.50, lunch, $2.25. Middle school lunch, $2.40. High school breakfast, $1.50. Lunch, $1, $1 to $2.90. Let's say.
Lunch one, $2.90.
Two and three, $2.75. A la carte, $2.90. Staff breakfast, $1.75. Lunch, $3.50. Reduced prices. Elementary breakfast, $0.30. All others, $0.40.
Hey, do we have a second?
A second there.
P, motion from Mr. Fuller, second from Mrs. Long. Discussion?
Middle school breakfast?
Was there a presentation?
Yeah, they've got a presentation. Okay, I'm sorry, I'll just shut up.
That's okay, that will be a real brief. I just wanted to say that Bonnie Haspel is going to be in a student group to raise money for his school to hold a meeting, not a bond. Bonnie is trading with the table for this, for the 2016-17 school year. The reason for the $10 price meal and paid lunches is because school districts who belong to national school like them are required to do an annual paid lunch equity tool, which you have in front of you, coupled that contract for the upcoming school year. What that paid lunch equity tool does, it determines your weighted lunch price average within all the annual school resources, $2.46. The requirement is to sell revised, which means we are $0.29 over that cost. If you do the $10 cap, you are only required to raise lunch prices by $10. It does not apply to the reduced meal prices, which are heavily set, and it does not apply to breakfast. It applies to lunch. And Bonnie created for a new equation, which you have in doubt, indicating what the prices are for all the lunch lines for 2016-17 school year. Any questions? Pretty straightforward, so it's unfortunate requirement that we have been told to not go away in the near future.
Big work, man.
Terry, thank you for, thank you for your work there, Mr..
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any discussion or motion? Hearing none. Bobby, you will call vote, please.
Andy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, and the next one, which sounds like this way, will be the summer maintenance plan. Jake?
So, I'm actually going to need a motion on the desk here in Fitz Park. It's not filling up, we're working there, but that's the first document attached.
Okay.
See, we want to cover that one first.
We would need to do a separate motion.
Yep. I put out three prices, Quality Door, La Force, and Omni. Omni turned down the effort in the bid. They get their, most of the material in this budget is from La Force anyways. They subcontract, so they felt they'd be of no good given the list of material. So, I just have the two prices, and I am recommending the higher one due to the timeframe that they can perform the work. Quality Door assured me that they would have it installed themselves prior to the June, which is very important to us. And La Force, so that they would more than likely have to use a subcontractor to even come close to that timeframe, so for the small amount of difference.
Yes.
I'd prefer more quality work.
I make a motion that we accept the bill from Quality Door and hardware in the amount of fifty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-two dollars.
Good second. Okay, motion from Ms. Need, second from Mr. McKenna, on the secure entrance bid. Any discussion? Let's do roll call vote then, since it is an expenditure.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Candy Mary?
Yes.
Mike Foley?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay, so then the summer projects, obviously the secure entrances, well, I apologize for having a document that lists all these, but we've been talking about them pretty regularly over the last couple of months. The secure entrances are, are big one, we're performing that all, not all, majority of it in-house, we will have some of the glazing and our hardware help from Quality Door on that. Otherwise, our own staff is demolishing, rebuilding walls with the help of local concrete contractor to help us with the software. So that's going to tie up a lot of my crew for a lot of the month of June, so that's going to be pretty taxing on us, but I, I think we have the right people to do so. Along with that, we've already started the wall cavity repair on the high school. We should be able to get the majority of the remainder not helped this year. They've been here for two weeks now. They've been working very good with schools still being in session. Luckily, a good portion of it is on the ball theater, so that tends to be not populated very much of the day, so they've been able to work throughout the day and not causing any disturbances to the school. They will probably be here for the majority of June as well. We have Systems Tech here, started Monday for the camera upgrades. They will start doing some of the, the behind the scenes cable and work that doesn't affect the whole of the day, this week and next week, and then obviously once the students are gone, they'll, they will be more in-depth in the installation and the software side of it. Current access is hopefully going to start next week with, that's through Primark Securities. They will start with the software side of it if they can't get here next week, but not earlier the week after. That will increase current access, just a number of doors, we have enough software to do sixteen. That will be all pulled and installed in-house by us throughout. We, we buy the components and hire them to come in and install the components needed in the panels and do the programming, so that on a later date we can connect it up to the wires, and it works. So we can do that in-house to relieve some of the cost through the month of July. The spring valley roof, we have all the material ordered, it should be starting to show up next week, and they will hit the ground running on the sixth. So we have had, I've had two meetings with our kit symbol already on process and flow and making sure that we make it safe for any occupants or community events altered during the summer. So I think we have a good plan in place for that, keep everybody safe. And then the window treatments will be starting probably the week after school. A lot of stuff going on in the month of June, so that, that's okay. We're going to rely heavily on pulling custodians from the elementary schools to help out with the different areas as we need them, between here and the middle school, secure entrances. So then July obviously will become reversible, getting help to help them. So we got a busy, busy summer, but I, I feel very confident that we have the right, the right team to get it done. We got some great skilled individuals on, on staff, so. I guess that leads us to potential end of the budget, last couple items. We have, we have a compressor and air handling unit nine that is in very, very bad shape. It's actually, we, we're not even running it right now. That price to purchase that and replace that along with another compressor we have replaced right now, or that we have the replacement for right now, but it's not installed yet, to get those both installed and to buy the one compressor, it would be eight thousand dollars. That would be something that I would hope to, as Tim grants me permission. That would be probably the first ticket I'd pull to get those done. Second one would be the, the trailer that we haul our lawnmowers and our tractor on around the district and up to, like, the walk-in. Different types we have to move our aerial lifts around, stuff like that, to spread out wood chips. We move that tractor quite a bit for just installing these things throughout the district from the country school and whatnot. How old is that trailer then?
Sixteen, seventeen years old.
Okay. It has been well-lived and ducted and tied together to its extent, and it's, it's getting to the point where it's quite a safety concern, so I would be looking to upgrade that, and that's something that, you know, full of that ten thousand dollars would put in a number of companies within our immediate area that I would want to give a fair chance to it. So I just want to know that I would go do those steps, and I have started a little bit on it. But that would probably be a second, second thing. Then there's a couple of pieces of equipment on here, a burnisher for custodial equipment, right on scrubber, walk behind scrubber, carpet extractors, and replace some more sections of worn out carpet with VCT tile, warrant that as we dwindle down, we can replace funds to accordingly as I, as I get them. So I guess if you have any questions or anything about those items, that would be my intentions to spend as much as Tim alone.
I take it that the compressor is, how long does it have expectancy?
They're all original units on this. So.
So, yeah, yeah.
So when Jake is talking compressor, he's talking air conditioning?
So it's the condensers that he's talking about, this particular one happens to be the commons. So it's an area that certainly gets a lot of usage.
Okay. Jake, are you going to be working on the, the entrances at the same time at the middle school and high school, or one at a time?
We're going to start at the middle school, get all the demo done there, and then we'll, we'll leave, we'll have to stay here with our electrical, HVAC, and then structural. So we'll get that demoed, leave a portion of it there, pull most people over to high school, demo that out, then once, you know, electrical roughing is done, we can come over, do electrical here, go back. It'll be a back and forth process, so.
Training back and forth?
For the most part, yeah, they're both going to be pretty much inaccessible for the month of June, at least to some extent.
You're going to have your hands full.
I know.
I mean, the middle school principal just takes off in June, and then July, you can be back to work?
No, they'll.
Don't you got other duties?
They'll just, they'll just have different entrances to the building.
Yeah, about half of the, the offices will be shut down in both locations, so if you're familiar, it'd be basically the principal's offices in both locations would still be pretty much accessible, conference rooms in both areas, and there are exterior, or hallway entrances into those areas that we can isolate.
So we should be all right. Okay. Then I guess we'd be looking for a motion to approve the summer meeting, let's play.
Are you looking for a motion that includes those potential last minute projects? Is that, is that what?
I believe that's your intention.
Yeah, that's my intention, is just, you know, a number of them are full of ten thousand dollar threshold, but I want to put everything on the table for it.
I move the board approve the summer maintenance plan, including additional expenditures for potential last minute projects as noted.
Second.
Motion for Mr. McKenna, second from Mrs. Yushka. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Very good. Uh, next up, resignations.
Do you wish to like, like new hires?
No, the resignations on top.
We, we've got resignations above, that's all right. I'm just following this. Uh, looking for a motion, please.
I move the board approve the resignation of Molly Frisch, effective five five, two thousand and sixteen, and the resignations of B and B Hattonburg, Elizabeth McDonald, Terry Hilger, Nancy Resch, Clea Bauer, Molly O'Brien, Dean Hermison, Nicole Bunce, and Dale Smol, effective June thirty, two thousand and sixteen.
Head second. Hey, motion from Mr. Three, second from Mr. Fuller, to approve the resignations as stated in the motion. Any discussion? I think everyone had a chance to read the letters from everyone.
Someone has said what it is, someone of non-renewals decided to resign, correct? My understanding of it.
Yes. Four of those here would have been non-renewals had they not resigned.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed. Motion carries. Now we'll go to new hires.
I move the board through hiring of Melissa Baldwin for the two thousand and sixteen, seventeen school year.
Motion for Mr. Mary, second from Ms. Long. She's CD card, did you say, what did I believe that name?
Yes.
Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed.
Let's say a roll call vote on that.
Oh, I got, I'm sorry, Patrick, I misread that. Thank you very much. Let's do a roll call then, please. Thank you for the correction.
Scott Jensen?
Yep.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Candy Mary?
Yes.
And Mike Foley?
Yes.
Same result. Okay, on to the next one, donations. And you looking for a motion, please?
Remove the board except with its thanks and expression of appreciation of the following donations. So, one hundred dollars from Mark and Mara Incho, two hundred and seventy dollars from A River and Iron Club, two hundred and seventy dollars from Red Robin Golf Club, two hundred and seventy dollars from A Go Recreation Foundation, Blue Lion Club, Dairy Business, a hundred dollars from Cove and Ash Cart Union, five hundred dollars from Carwood's Transport, and one thousand dollars from Alcoras, and the total amount of two thousand five hundred and ten dollars.
Second. Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Need and second from Mr. Mary to accept the donations as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, Bobby, roll call vote, please.
Jeanie Long?
Yes.
Patrick McKenna?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Danielle Yushka?
Yes.
Tim Fuller?
Yes.
Candy Mary?
Yes.
Scott Jensen?
Yes.
Mike Foley?
Yes.
Okay, then at this time, we would be looking for a motion to adjourn in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five for MV to confer with legal counsel concerning litigation which the board is involved. So.